The meeting was called for by Mayor Charlie DuVet and Senator. Senator One Key and President of the meeting was Mr. Stanley, Terry DuVet, and Maggie Peterson. Also attending was Caroline Percy, James Pearson. James says his name. And guests were Katie Black, Jack Mabey, and Sarah Tinsley, and Kathy Salsazar. Charlie brought to the council attention a paper that Caroline had written about addressing the chairman of Kansas City District Chiefs. Everybody in room. Hamburg, a member wishing to have or should address the chair by saying mayor and wait until he is recognized before speaking further. Caroline read the minutes of the June 4, 2018, meeting and the special meeting on June 25, 2018, on the wells. Kim made a motion to accept the minutes as read, Maggie seconded the motion, passed three to zero. Caroline read the bills as the council would over them. Jack Mabey had requested that they be read. Terry made a motion to pay the bills. Kim seconded the motion, passed three to zero. Sarah and Katie were working representing the community club. They wanted to make sure that the club gave us $2,000 that we had asked for, the playground club, will be taken care of by the city. Sarah also wanted to know if the set there now was safe and worth buying new pieces to repair the set. Terry said that we need a special meeting to discuss the playground and bring up ideas. Council set a playground meeting on July 25, 2018. Jack Mabey said that we had equipment to clean all our sewer drains, and he said that we spend money that we don't have to if we would train our workers. He said that we had a really bad spot on the road at railroad in Maine. James was to get it filled in. Terry said we could only do one thing at a time. James said that he had gotten remixes to fix. A hole in front of the city after someone had fallen. Kim said that she could ask Chris if we had a hole where we could use. James said he would get a pallet of remix, forty to sixty bags of walls. His sister-in-law may be able to get reduced price. Terry made a motion that we order the plow. Pallet, Maggie seconded the motion, three to zero, passed. Kathy Salsazar was complaining about the times on her reader reading, insisting that the readings didn't go together. Caroline told her to leave it. Leave them with her and she would look into it. James was showing the council the bad water. He was getting it through Chris explaining the water tower needs to be cleaned and that he could open some valves that are closed and might help fill the water. Kim made a motion to have a water tower cleaned, it costed $2,000. Terry seconded the motion, passed three to zero. Charlie and Caroline were going to a dinner for the PRFC of current money. We are to tell about how we use the money. James said that new law will cut the cutting time in half, and we need to find some way to use the floor office left of the wells, drink your own bottles of the mark. James said that he needed to rebuild that oak. Maggie asked about inventory of all the equipment that the city has plus their serial numbers. Caroline was to check with Pickmans on maintenance agreement on the sewer. Needed have Deep Creek clean out the sewers. James planned on continuing two classes of funds on electrical waters and wastewater. Kim asked about the weeks in the ditch on Main Street. James said that he had sprayed that but it ran out. Terry and James discussed the minutes over on how to fix it. James talked about the leak he found at Benny's. He said he'd fix it. Benny asked about not having to pay for the water from a break, and council said no. Next council meeting, the August 6, 2018, was a special meeting on July 23, 2018. Terry made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Kim seconded the motion, passed three to zero. Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Any additions or corrections?
Um, yeah. That was, um, where it says the pallet of remix. It wasn't James's sister-in-law's mom's. It was Mom's, Charlie's sister-in-law. So we could use James as he would get a pallet of remix as his sister-in-law. And then, you had a question?
Yeah, because it says Maggie asked about inventory. I don't remember.
I did.
Kim did.
But that's when they was calling me Maggie too, remember?
Oh.
Maggie two. Maggie one and Maggie two.
You didn't do the asking about the inventory?
Kim did.
Kim did.
Oh, Kim did.
Okay. Mom called her Maggie. It's Maggie two.
Mine was hard to understand at all, and the city's one they take wasn't really pretty because they feel like it's hard to go along. Okay, anything else? I know those are wearing these corrupted.
Any other corrections or additions?
Is Sarah's last name right on here?
Sarah Tinson.
Yeah.
You bet, Tinsley.
Okay. How you spell her name?
T-I-M-S-O-N.
T-I-M?
S-O-N.
Anything else? Special council meeting on the playground equipment, July 23, 2018. The meeting was called for by Mayor Charles DuVet, President of the City. Both presidents, Kim Stanley, Terry DuVet, and Maggie Peterson. Katie Arnold, Jason Anderson, and also President was James Peterson, Caroline Percy. Guest was Martin Pearl with Stanley. The Stanley kids consider it's still the name. Sarah presented a check for $2,000 from the community club for our playground equipment. Maggie and Terry both brought pictures of playground equipment that they had found that were on sale. The council had a discussion on each one. Caroline also gave us some ideas on some equipment. Terry asked how much money we had to spend. Caroline told them there was a grant of $5,800, $2,000 from the pop fund, plus $2,000 from the club, $2,000 for the pop project fund. Terry said that she felt the city could afford to put some money into the fund. They discussed, they had a discussion on the playground equipment that is already in the park, the vast loopholes in their conditions. James went down to the park to see if we would have room for the new equipment. He felt that we did, but we would need to get more ground cover. Terry made a motion to purchase the cruising tapestry system at the cost of $12,194 from NV80 Playground for a break. Kim seconded the motion, passed four to zero. Kim said she could ask Chris if he would donate towards the park fund. Kim said that you could ask military about helping with the ground cover, telling them that we are in a small town. It was suggested that we ask the business in the area if they would be willing to help. Sarah asked about monitoring the equipment to make sure that it's safe and that no damage has been done, but we need money to paint the equipment that is already in the park. Terry made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and seconded the motion, passed four to zero. Meeting adjourned, September 18.
Any questions or additions to the special meeting?
Yeah, weren't we gonna ask?
You gotta get crop service.
Yeah, ask Crop Service and Chris down there about donating money to help with paint and, you know, fixing up the park. That was also part of the deal.
It was a serious, yeah, because we were gonna ask each other to shoot, but they felt that we shouldn't shoot much. I'll let you know. Any other additions or corrections? Bills for July 2, 2018. West Star Energy Street Lights, $188.33. West Star Energy for the office, the wells, the park, and the sewer, $783.66. Gas service for the office and the sewer plant, $72.58. I will tell you that we did find some space with what we're being charged for. We found that there was heater or something down number three well, because we couldn't figure out why we were getting a gas bill from them that was on. So keep it down and turn that off. And then, the number one well, we tried to floor everybody up. There was a gas heater in there, and the pipe pipe had gone out, the whole building was full of gas. It got a little bit down there. So, those are two that might, you know, come down a little bit, and especially with the gas, and then when Crop Service takes over, that will pull down a little bit more on those bills. But Valley Telephone, $86.13. Sands Club membership for the year, $100. Charles Matthew, Charles's certificate, $150. James Peterson, mileage in luncheon class, $258.02. CNS Service Incorporated Battery Service Call and Fuel, $196.65. Lincoln County Refuge, $1,043.86. Division of Environment Wastewater Permit, $185. Smith and Love was come for lift station and vacuum, $808.50. Beverly Insurance Agency Director of Official Liability, $100. Environmental Lab Water Testing, $222. Now, that's for a couple of months. KDOR Miss Landings Tax, Auto Protection and Cleaning, $69.46. State Farm Truck Insurance, $369.67. Mayrow for myself, $845.9. James Peterson, $872.71. Jennifer O'Hara lawyer fees, $600. James Mayrow, $983.53. James had asked us for his payroll. That was something he'd asked if we could do it on a normal basis.
What do you get paid usually?
We get paid once a month, and he won't, we get paid every two weeks.
Oh.
Total expenses, $8,235.19. It's been on the debit card. Lot of implement, seal, kit, and labor, $61.42. Dollar General, pop, $10.85. U.S. Post Office Water Testing, $16.40. Walmart Flex, $123.13. Sam's, $54.35. Dollar General posters and stuff, that's when I had to sign up for the tower cleaning, $272.66. Our total income was $11,761.41. West Star, it was $553.13. State of Kansas, we got $1,627.47. Kansas Gas, $72.35. Pop Project, $476.90 for the month. Our bank balance is $22,278.16. Our debit balance is $117.34. Our CDs are $115,332.8. Our total is $137,727.58.
Any questions or additions or minutes or bills paid?
What was that, under income, the Kansas Guard, what's that?
What was?
Kansas Guard, that's the bottom, $72.35, what was that?
Gas, Kansas Gas.
Yeah, that's just gas.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I missed. Those are something you generally get loosely every month. West Star and the State of Kansas. State of Kansas, like our funds, our highlight funds, everything else like that. The other bulk ones are customers' water bills.
That lawyers fee, fee for Jennifer was altered by Crop Industries.
Yeah. The wells is up.
Well, that's on the wells. Um, I approve. Yep, I approve. I make a motion, we accept the minutes and the bills, and that's right.
I second correction.
Terry made a motion, approve the minutes and bills. Kim seconded the motion. Approved, all approved, ready to write in. Four, nothing, four to zero.
Okay. I always wanted to do the bill contest.
Yeah.
I'll let you do it.
Do you just have the one copy so people can read it?
Yeah, we only have one copy. I can make some more, but we only have the one copy that has to be signed and stamped.
So, we should probably go to executive session and just have somebody read it.
Uh.
We should probably go to executive session and have somebody read it.
No, we don't have to.
If we want to discuss it, we do. If we want to discuss it.
Yeah, you said it's afternoon.
As long as there is no discussion.
Okay.
But no, they haven't read it. I re-reported it.
Hasn't read it? Jason, you read it?
No.
Nobody asked. I'm gonna go to executive session for, um, ten minutes, 7:30.
Wouldn't like to make motions, you accept that, sign it.
I second. Terry, Jason made a motion, sign this.
We might.
All right, go ahead. I made a motion to sign, to sign the quick claim, we need to, to Crop Service, and what is it called? The coat holder. For your mom and Caroline to sign it, get it back to Katie and Mom.
Terry, second.
Terry, second.
Yep. All approved, ready to write in. Okay.
Shut off.
Put it on cool or something.
Is it hot?
Yes.
It's very cool. Don't it not be so loud?
Hmm?
Don't it not be so loud?
It's not loud, Sarah.
Everybody else is hot. If you wanna hear, move over here.
It's okay.
You can come over there, Jack, if you can't hear. Oh, all right. A lot of bodies in here, get them out here, stuff it real fast.
Yeah, I can just sign it. Yeah, because this is just, um, I'm getting.
Kind of knock the wall down, extend into there.
Two chairs up here, they're not all up in the back. Okay. All right, your school bus, your school bus out?
Okay, I, I would just like to basically ask permission or whatever if I could possibly pull in the driveway to the water tower and then back into our property. Then during the day, I would be out on the street, so. But at nighttime, you know, when I park my bus at night, I just want to have, know if I have permission to use your guys' drive to back into our property.
That's no problem. See no problem with that. But as parking out the street, what do you mean parking out the street?
On the east side of my house.
Oh, okay. I guess it's all right, everything is all right. Yeah?
Yeah, it's just wider than the one we got. Should never be able to swing in to the one on the south end.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah.
I just wanted to find out if I can do that, so.
Just tell if it snows, and you have to dig yourself out. But you'll have to have your bus plug in in winter time anyway.
Yeah. So, I mean, at that time, I might be on the east side of my house. I don't know during the winter, but either or, you know.
I just, you know, the parking in the street, that's the only thing that, you know, we've had some complaints of trucks sitting there, and it's always been, it's always been that way, and it's gonna be that way. Trucks sitting there on the side. They're just gonna be sitting there all day. What time do you get off your bus around?
Well, you know, I'm gone two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, and then in the afternoon, when I come home, it would probably be parked out back. But come winter time, it might be a different story because the bus has to be pulled in. So. And there again, you know, come winter time, how much shall I want to tear up my own yard and the drive back there going in and out?
It's all right.
No, I have no problem with that. Was that the question? People would ask me? I have no problem with that.
I just wanted to be sure and ask, so.
Can you just start? Can you just start then?
And when you start?
Um, I, the sixteenth is the first day of school, so. Got to go over and inspect the buses on Saturday or Friday.
Yeah, for the C E L.
Yeah. Got air brakes too. All right, thank you.
Katie Black with Water Bill. That'd be, you're down on the Water Bill.
Um.
Well, that's what she got, Katie Black, Water Bill.
Yeah. That I would ask her, I have a counsel, if we're going to executive session, because I'm going to be talking about medical stuff.
About what?
Medical stuff. And it's for somebody that's not here.
Okay. How long?
Fifteen minutes. I probably won't even take that long.
Want to, want to do that first?
Yeah, I was gonna say, are you guys wanting?
We'll leave you last.
I don't care about that.
Okay, Jack?
Why don't you go ahead, tell these people, I'll press it later.
Okay. Magana?
Okay. I apologize for not being here last month. I just wanted to give you the report on the community meeting. I just wrote down exactly what people wrote down and kind of summarized it. Not quite sure where we'll go from there, but.
Can you literally?
Oh, yes, I do. And kind of the top three priorities, I'm not gonna read over the whole list, was getting the falling down structures that pose a safety and health issue taken care of, particularly on Main Street. The walkability due to poor sidewalks and dangerous buildings on Main Street and around the park area, and then the poor conditions of the street in town. And so, I guess you've already talked to Jennifer. She's working on the ordinances and that's getting going. Just takes time. So, I just kind of wanted to make sure you had that report, and I'd like to have another community meeting coming up. School's starting, I mean, I think we need to wait till further in September, and I might just go like to the church after church, or to both of the churches, pick a couple Sundays, see what other community members think. I also shared with, I don't know if you've got them in the mail yet, the Leadership Lincoln County information. I mailed those to the city council people, to the pastor who came to the meeting, to Katie, a couple other people who I thought sounded interesting at that, interested at that meeting. The help that Quiddy Grant would take for a couple, two, three, even four maybe, to attend Leadership Lincoln County. I know it is a series of months, one Thursday a month, I think it's a third Thursday a month. If you're not familiar with the program, they go around to different places in the county. They go to Topeka just to learn a little bit about leadership and what's going on in your own community. And then they do a project, and sometimes they do a big project, sometimes they split into a little project. And I talked to Kelly, and she was okay with the people that went from there to actually pick a project in Beverly to work on, and then we could work on maybe writing a grant, whatever the project ends up being. So, I did request to the Lincoln School District to see if there was a junior or senior that wanted to be part of Leadership Lincoln County also that we could pay for, so we'd have kind of the youth side of things. So, if anybody's interested, just let me know. Don't be too worried about the application. It's kind of worrying, it seems daunting, but it's not really. And I think they're gonna take everybody because they've got enough money for tuition so that you could, if you really are interested in doing it, to making the time commitment that you could get into the class. Yes?
There's several kids that go to test kits, there's several that aren't even available.
Yes, if I can't get any, that was my next, is to ask kids here that went to school in test kits, so we'd have at least two kids maybe, so. But I have not gotten to test kit schools yet. Do you go to school in test kits?
Lincoln.
Lincoln? Are you a junior or senior?
I'm a senior.
Do you have time? Are you into a lot of sports? I'll let you read the application and see what you think, and that's fine. I'm fine with as many as we can get who are interested in Beverly, so I think it would be a good experience for everybody. And that's really about all I have today, unless somebody has questions for me. I am working on some health-related, uh, there's, it's hard to get health-related data any smaller than like north, central, regional. It's hard to get triggered-down data, but the pharmacy is able to go with a ZIP code and tell me the top ten medications that are prescribed, and no other information, just what those are for six, seven, four, two, three zip codes. And the hospital was able to get all this ZIP code admissions to any hospital in the state for last year. So, no names or anything, just numbers and what their diagnosis was. So, kind of trigger down what the health, kind of what the health looks like in Beverly, but the numbers are so small, it's kind of hard to just say, this is it, you know? But it is a, is a, is a starting point on the health side of it, so. Any questions for me or anything? Nope, nope. Need some more support? We're not gonna hurt him.
I'll see, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, little, thanks, Ellen.
Bye.
Well, David sent you early, we'll start with you.
Good. I'm gonna slide over here and kind of.
I already gave them out, too.
Lead on, yes. I appreciate you guys seeing.
I appreciate you guys seeing me this evening. Um, I'd given Caroline information the other day and she had a packet of paperwork out. Um, I'm gonna read from the paperwork so you don't have to, or you can look at the pretty pictures, whatever works for you guys, okay? Um, "Thank you for allowing me to come this evening and speak to you. Back on May first, the second, and third, there were significant storms that came through Lincoln County. On the first, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the area of the practice football field and the sirens were activated in the city of Lincoln. Law enforcement was directed by the sheriff to drive up and down the streets of the community to make citizens aware of the weather and to also make them, and to also have them take cover. Through this process, I was upstairs in my office in the courthouse and lost internet access at the courthouse because of a lightning strike that was in the near vicinity. That same evening, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the Beverly and Barnard area. This was the same night that the AF3 tornado went through Ottawa County. The tornado was on the ground for twenty-nine minutes and roughly fourteen miles. The base of the tornado was a half to three-quarters mile wide. Power was knocked out in Beverly and Barnard communities and volunteer firefighters were asked to go to their respective stations, get in trucks, and drive around the communities and make announcements pertaining to the weather and direct the public to go inside and seek shelter because of the severe weather. Corrective actions were determined after the event that Lincoln County needed to have one central source for tornado siren information, maintenance, and record-keeping. The Repeater Board of Lincoln County has agreed to be the primary agency in charge of maintenance and checks pertaining to the siren system in Lincoln County, as they are already in charge of the maintenance issues and biannual checks of the repeater system. They have a technician from the Minneapolis area that is contacting if there are any issues that need to be corrected or fixed. The seven members of the repeater board are Richard Vansel, he's the chairperson right now, and he's up in Hunter speaking this evening at their city hall meeting also, Mark Levin, John Alquist, Randy Rathman, Brett Kingen, Jay Corr, Jeremiah Zacco, and Troy Anderson. Each fire district, emergency management, EMS, and the city of Lincoln all pay three hundred dollars. Both school districts pay a hundred dollars and the health department pays two hundred dollars for yearly dues to the repeater board. These funds are collected and utilized to help pay the cost of the technician for checking the system, making any corrections or updates or upgrades. The repeater board would ask each community to pay three hundred dollars additionally annually into this account. When the fire sirens are activated, it's the fire departments that are, that is utilizing this asset. When severe weather is imminent and life safety is at risk, it is the community's responsibility to activate the siren to make people aware. Back on June eleventh of two thousand eighteen, I approached the Lincoln County commissioners and asked them if I could approach each city in the county and ask that the city councils, if they would allow Lincoln County to take ownership of the sirens and maintain insurance coverage on the sirens. K-CAM, the insurance carrier for the county, had advised that if Lincoln County was able to show ownership of the sirens, that they would not have any issues with having them covered under the policy of the county. The repeater board and I are looking at writing grants to facilitate updating sirens in Lincoln County. We've contacted Storm Sirens, Inc., a company out of Roman, Oklahoma, and have received some quotes on century sirens. I've attached paperwork specifically with information about the sirens for the city of Beverly, pages three through five of this packet of paperwork. The intent is to replace the sirens in the communities in Lincoln County along with the siren in Hunter, as it is part of the Lincoln County Fire District, and then also add a siren to the Vesper Community Building for the Vesper community. The cost includes the sirens and the decoder to be able to interact with paging system located in the law enforcement center. There are decoders within the county currently that were put in back in, in the nineties. The information that I'm presenting you is without battery backup, as generally the battery backup system is usually only good for about five years and then you are responsible for updating that on a five-year basis. The repeater board has looked into the cost of the battery backup for each system and it was determined that five years you are replacing the battery, so we're looking at a grant to assist in purchasing a twenty kilowatt generator that would be tied to the fire department. When power goes out in the community, the generator would automatically engage and run through the duration when power is restored to the community. I approached Precision Electric and was quoted a cost of eight thousand dollars per community and the cost would be for the generator installation and the generator, excuse me, installation of the generator and the wiring to complete the project. The cost to install a new siren in the city of Beverly would be fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars without battery backup. Complete and installed, turnkey-ready through this company. The company was, has stated that they would place one siren located on First Street, approximately a half block west of Main Street. This is a Century Model 10V siren pictured below. The overall cost of the project for the eleven sirens for the location, for these locations, is a hundred and forty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I've previously spoken to the Lincoln County Commission about matching funds for this project and they advised me that if the repeater board would take ownership of the sirens, that the county could insure them through their insurance carrier, they would, they would match funds, yet to be determined in the amount. I spoke to the Assyria City Clerk and she advised me that the Dang Chee Hansen Foundation gave them ten thousand dollars to update slash upgrade the tornado siren in their community. This happened within the past three years. Um, again, I approached the city of Lincoln about this already. I spoke to them, their last city council meeting, like, the third Monday of the month, and they have already said yes. I have their blessing to proceed with writing grants. Um, again, if the city of Beverly is not interested in this, I will just not pursue a new tornado siren for the city of Beverly.
Are they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Are they wanting us to come up with the fourteen million?
No, no, that, that's, that's most of what the grant is gonna cover. And then again, I asked the commissioners, and again, there's some other grants that I'm looking at writing also to help offset those costs.
We may have to come up with something, just...
Well, again, all I'm currently asking for is three hundred dollars annually. That, that's gonna be your cost and rather than, rather than having to pony up money to match, but that three hundred dollars annually per year would also help include the siren and the checks and, and all the updates that are done. Um, and I think there's two and a half, three years warranty timeframe on those sirens. Um, I've also recently, in addition to this, Storm Sirens, Inc., I've been in touch with a company out of Missouri, just on the other side of Kansas City, Blue Valley Public Safety. And their technician and I drove around two Thursdays ago and went through all the communities in the county, went up to Hunter, went to Barnard, everywhere, went to Vesper, as there is currently no siren in Vesper, but he was talking that what we could do with one of Sylvan's sirens was take it, refurbish it, and then put it at Vesper. So, again, with the location of the siren sits down beside the fire station right now, I don't know if that would have to be moved, not sure, but, uh, again, West Star is the, the electric provider for this part of the county. Um, I previously spoke to someone from their agency and they said, "If you purchase a fifty-foot pole from this company in Salina that they use, they will come out and put it in for free." And again, that fifty-foot pole, whatever the monetary value might be, um, would also be in addition to offset the grant, that, that's a, a cost that is associated with your, your part of your match. So, uh, uh, again, um...
When would you need our answer?
I, I, I don't need it tonight unless you folks are comfortable enough tonight giving me an answer. Um, and again, Lincoln, I, I presented that to them, their last meeting, and they gave me an answer that night.
It's three hundred dollars a year and you're gonna surface it, take care of it?
Upgrades, updates, tests.
We don't have to worry about any of it?
No matter.
They're wrong.
No.
Other than, like, last time, the tornadoes aren't not going off.
But Dave, but if you're looking, you're looking into getting generators, maybe?
Possibly, or, or again, too, there's, there's also a battery backup option, but again, um, I think on page four shows, page four, the city of Beverly, shows a cost with the battery backup. And that's, I have to put my readers back on, with the, with the battery backup, that's sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Two thousand dollars more.
Difference for a battery. So, again, even still, with all the communities ponying up three hundred dollars, we're still not gonna be, and we'll have some fees built up by the time the warranty ends on the product, whatever gets installed. So, uh, again, we're not, we're not robbing money out of the repeater board money and they're not a wealthy institution either.
Right.
Um, that, that, that would offset that cost. And, and again, this Justin, this technician that lives over in Minneapolis, um, again, we have a problem with the radios, we can contact him, he's generally out that afternoon and fixing the problem.
Now, why does the siren have to be moved?
It, it, I'm not sure if it has to or not. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It may. I, I, I don't know yet.
Okay, well, I seen this, it's, um, first at Main and that's the back, the whole hole.
Well, and again, that's more towards the center of, of town to where the radius would, would all be able to hear it.
Yeah.
It is why they're looking at relocating it. They have a, a digital map with the decimal amounts that the siren activates to and, and if it was located at that location, that would, that would ensure that the siren would be heard, excuse me, by the whole community.
And we can't use the head that's up there already?
The gentleman that came through with me last time said, "No, we couldn't." Um, I found some paperwork at the office that showed the, the Beverly siren was purchased in eighty-two or eighty-three.
Oh, way out there, antique.
And, and like, for example, the one up in Hunter was put in in seventy-five.
Oh.
So, we're not, worse often, Barnard's, Barnard's is similar to this. Lincoln's was two thousand nine for both of theirs. Sylvan has a two thousand nine-ish and then older models also.
Yeah, like I said, the fire clerk, go ahead.
Well, I just had a question on the money. Um, you said that the battery backup is a life expectancy on this?
No, that's, that's the life expectancy of that battery backup system. Um, our technician was hold us, he gave us that information and he deals with that stuff on a daily basis.
So, how much then would the generator?
Uh, again, I had that quote in there, Precision Electric, I spoke to them for a twenty kilowatt generator and to have it wired, um, to where, to where if electricity got, got compromised here, they would wire it to where the generator would automatically kick on. They're saying that, that twenty KW generator would be, to install it and do all that work is eight thousand dollars.
Right, but how long is that gonna last?
Generator, propane, it'll last forever.
It's taken care of.
Yeah, and, and it, it's really low maintenance and, and we're looking at propane as opposed to gasoline, because who knows how often power will be compromised here and, and gas in a minute or ten is, for a duration amount of time, is, is not good.
So, when are you gonna know whether you're gonna do the battery or the generator, depends on how many grants?
Well, and, and that's kind of city council's alternative, too.
I'd like to run the generators without labor.
And, and again, it'd be, it'd be more cost-efficient to run a, a generator and then in addition to that, if, if we had to, you could, in, in the winter time, and I'm not, I'm not saying this, but you could ultimately, I know there's heat down in the fire station. If, if power was compromised in the city, you could at least have the hordes of people here go down to the fire station as a place of warmth. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I remember, I remember when the, uh, fire alarm used to sit back here, you know? Yeah, the three-legged, the legs are still over there for it. I can't remember who sold the siren to some other town. My question is, do we own that or does the fire department own that?
Yes.
Paperwork that I saw showed the city of Beverly. That's, that's a receipt that I saw.
Okay, there you go.
That's a receipt that I saw.
Okay.
From Louisville when it was purchased back then.
Okay.
So, you basically need approval for us for the three...
Well, again, if, if you're comfortable making that decision and I'm not trying to shove it down your throat or anything.
No, I mean, we need something, we can't, you know? We got, we got a lot of people in our, people in our hands, you know?
Right.
People's lives.
Right.
Yeah, they want to ride bar trucks to pull it through town.
Yeah.
And compromise, compromise life safety, yeah, the first responders, too.
Sure.
So...
Did I make a motion? We go ahead and go with David's proposal?
I tack a nip. Very good idea.
And, and again, prior to, prior to me writing the grant, the motion was made and it was seconded. Again, if the grant is approved, that's the only way that I will allow the county or, or the city to, to start making those annual payments. And it will be before this year is up. I mean, I plan to write the grants, get busted in my tail on that, but, uh, again, it will probably be starting two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
At some point. And I'm not saying November of two thousand nineteen, because what's the use of that? But, but, again, is that fair with all of you?
Yes.
That's good. That's good.
Again, motion, I didn't mean to interrupt, motion was made and seconded.
Yeah.
Ready, right hand. Pass.
Great. Thank you. If you have any questions, I think Caroline has my car, or again, I can run out, I can run out of my vehicle, leave one for each of you if you would like.
Thanks. Thanks for doing all that.
Uh, again, it's just a far, but trying to get it rolling that way, so... Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, Caroline, what was that from Indianapolis Police Department?
Um, we got a letter from stating that they have, uh, finished their dog pound and everything and it's open and stuff, but they want, they're increasing their price. Um, agreement is made first of January two thousand nineteen between the city of Minneapolis hereafter, for purchase of Minneapolis and the city of Beverly hereafter, for Beverly. They are increasing their annual pay to seventy-five dollars. We pay fifty now. You pay it in Indianapolis, twenty-five dollars per dog plus two dollars per day per dog for food and water. And if the dog isn't picked up, we actually pay to have it put to sleep for twenty-five dollars. We are in agreement on it. We just need to sign it and... I mean, we have some money.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We can, we'll have force if he knows who a dog is, too, that, you know?
That'll help.
Yeah. And that's the other thing, too, is we really need to figure out some way to get a pay on all the dogs that are in this town. Because, uh, our league has problems with a couple of them, where their houses are low and live, they try to jump a bit, they wreck their cat and they got one of them and stuff and, and you have to say no to your house.
Does the vet still come here to discount your shots?
We can make an appointment for them, too.
Because then people might bring their animals and you can register them.
The last time we did that, we had three people.
Yeah. I know we did.
So, but, you know, as another, we could, we could, we could, too.
I know how many dollars they're paying to bill them, saying, "I'm gonna have to tag them, but..."
County or somewhere closer with a tag to do, I need to order tags, yeah. And so, I'm gonna, I don't know. I wish we could get tags, but we didn't have a date off.
Can't we go into, like, Oshlins and see if maybe it's an eight buck tag?
Why do you want a tag with no date on it?
Well, they've got, she's got a bunch of old tags.
Oh, I got them.
Our, our tags, the only way you could order them is a hundred and fifty of them.
No, hell, it's probably not.
And we never use that, we never even, yeah, we use it.
What I told her, I said, "As long as, if it says two thousand fifteen on the tag on issue, if the number on the tag matches her paperwork, it doesn't matter if it says eighteen ninety-five."
Forget one of them, now that's your name is scratched out.
And we can, we can use those hundred, two hundred tag.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we got about four, five boxes.
Yeah, every year they got a new box and no use, hardly any of them.
I would, as long as they try on the paperwork.
How much does it cost? A thirty dollars.
You show, you show, you show proof of, uh...
I think it's two if they're fixed.
Radars, no radars, radios.
And it's two if they're fixed, isn't it? There's a, there's a different price if they're fixed or not.
It used to be, but now they just put them down to three dollars a piece on them.
My curiosity, why don't we have our own dog pound?
So, we need to give an address and scratch it where?
Who picks the dog up?
Drains.
How do you transport it?
I have, I don't even know that.
Do we even have any equipment?
No, no, he just put it in.
There, there's a tranquilizer gun back there, but...
I know most of the dogs are docile enough, there's probably a couple, you'd either need a pull or, yeah, knock, knock him out.
Uh, yeah, well, one of this issue, we got a big life trap, the city has... The city has a big life trap that could double as a transport. But, I think there was one dog Kathy Salazar brought over here. She found at a leash or a camel's side.
Yeah, she knew the dog.
It was caught up on her property. She brought it over to us, and we found who's it was. And then it happened, taken it to the pound. And that'd be the first course of, my first course of action, is to find out whose it is.
Yeah, and sometimes that's, I mean, that's okay. You know, but some things are habitual violation.
Right.
Then you would...
You gotta use a little bit of common sense, and... Right, there's no sense grabbing a dog just because it's left somebody's yard.
Well, and after three days, they claim that they put it to sleep.
Right, well, if it's, that's where you, you gotta use some judgment.
I just keep them at my house and have them fall, they have them.
Accidents happen, but, you know, something that's like every day, you know, people are getting a lot of complaints, and I guess that dog would have to be around.
Remember Bell's dogs?
Oh, I remember.
Is there any special time of the year that you think...
I put them all down at one.
That they would go with them?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was later in the year.
Probably the fall, because the weekends and summer, they're all going out to the lake or wherever, nobody's around.
Until we have some way to enforce anything, nobody's gonna care about bringing their dog here to get registered.
So, just wait until we find some roster before that's what's done.
But, I mean, that's just the simple truth of it. Cats, nobody cares. Dogs, nobody cares. And if we have no way to enforce it, we're spending money and time for nothing.
She upcharges, what, sixty dollars over here that day? And so much for the shot.
I was putting that one for the board.
Now, does the city's insurance cover you if you were bitten by a dog by trying to obtain it?
I don't know.
I didn't know if that was under the job description.
I would presume so would be an in for you.
Yeah. Anything that's listed in the job description or duties page, anything that had, would have something to do with that, I wouldn't...
And it's listed in there?
I think so.
Okay, yeah, it's listed, oh.
I'm sure.
But if you're transporting them to Minneapolis or to Brooklyn, Seattle...
We'd say you got bit. We'd say go get take care of, and pay the bill. Order them to come.
One day off. One band-aid.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to visit. James asked, it sounds like, I mean, he told me what you found. It looked excessive in residue, is that right, James?
It wasn't as bad as it was in the past. It was a lot better than what you expected.
Then what I expected is the only thing that, he also reminded me that after it drained down, it took days and days to get the water level back up. You people not realize how near you are and having no water. You're very close.
Stop at the tower.
You have a problem, in case of fire, forget it, because you have no fire protection. We're in ten minutes. We hook our pump, we got a hydrant, and we're done. And also, in a few years, I guess, or whatever, it's insurance companies come around to check your fire department, your watering system, your pressures, your hydrants, your stories. And then they, regarding that, they set your fire insurance rate for the city. And when they see what we got here now, our rates will go sky high, because we have basically very low fire protection.
Because of the water towers?
Yes.
That's what the county will count on. They don't give you less credit for trucks because their trucks aren't here twenty-four seven. They give you little credit, not much.
Right.
But you hook, two pumpers on, two hydrants, and you'd be done in about fifteen minutes. In case of any other type of failure, if you don't realize, I don't know. There's a big mistake made when whoever drilled these wells convinces that three wells could be thirty-five gallon a minute. Well, everybody flares, they're still not a drink at the same time. We'd be out of water. So, you've got to keep that in mind. But, when that engineer and well builder is paid, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have been paid for that kind of...
So, basically, we don't have enough water?
We ran one well, it was completely dry one time.
Right, since we've, since we've got the new one. Okay, so what's the remedy to this?
Rawr.
You know, that ain't rawr, yeah. We just finished, finished the project, and you know, we can't until twenty forty.
What would that be?
Months, thousands and thousands of dollars of months, paying for all that stuff. But when I'm not twenty forty, I'll be a hundred and eight years old. I'll go over there. James, I had a visit, and he talked about the residue. And there's no residue in the old pipes. We've been working at it.
In the water tower?
And that's...
In the water lines.
My best suggestion, anybody having discolored water in the house, put in a, put in a whole house filter. That's the only way you can meter out.
Sure.
If you can't fight it, because you're gonna end up with a divorce machine or someplace else all the time.
And the new stuff that we're using for the water line, should help clean that up?
It's, eventually. Eventually.
Your best, it's not gonna happen overnight.
No.
We've had some, that stuff went on. You know, you go about ten years, no maintenance.
Sure.
You're not gonna catch up overnight.
No, no.
You've got ten maintenance people out there.
Right.
You can have a day. And, you know, everybody says the other thing is going so nice. Well, I'll assure you one thing. The city council mayor job isn't a social, a social function. It's a very hard work job. It's not a civil club or anything. And, and, I know in the past, a lot of us donated hundreds of hours, manual labor, doing things. And I guess we should be seeing council member in New Zealand because plenty is be done out there.
Yeah.
James?
Well, I feel for James. He can do it all. He had a tremendous deal, dumped on him. And it went on too long, it was unsupervised, everybody...
Yeah, for years.
Question, who is in charge? I'll ask that question. Who is in charge?
The council and the mayor.
Well, you can't let all the mayor...
No, I said the council and the mayor. Everybody's in charge, yeah.
You're all in charge, and it's, it'll be done. That's where it falls.
That's right.
I have one more little issue that, I walk a lot because I'm blind. And so, I come up to town after rain. I usually climb fresh mud on the sidewalks, because the ditches aren't... And to get up here by the old hardware building, you've got a choice. You've got eight feet there to walk in. Either fall in a ten-foot hole on this side, or break a leg in a two-foot hole over here. And there's no sentence, it should be, I'd need to be taken care of. And that pit down there, that hardware storage, door down, either it should be fenced with a permanent fence around it, or it should be filled. I don't know what actually you'd be thinking, but just putting it off isn't the answer.
We're not putting it off. We've sent him plenty of letters, have you not?
I just sent another one out.
Yeah, and he's not responding, so now we need to...
Pursue it.
Actually, our emergency state that he can be fined a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, so we just need to, we need to pursue that and send him a letter and certify a letter or something, make sure he gets it.
He needs to know, I don't expect him to ever come back to do anything there.
Well, then, if he doesn't ever do it, then we either charge him so much a day, which he won't pay, or we just do it ourselves and charge him the bill.
We've got plenty of hurt in the ditches and fill the hole there.
Yeah, and we're working on that.
Of your hat, I just, I'm not gonna complain anything, but I see this thing, but I know things, I can detect them.
You do.
I'll do as I can, I think, get a little far out. Get out, get my push through out, sweep some sidewalks off. Because I see when I'm walking there, places beside the sidewalk, Santa Virg is a little across the street.
They're a bad...
Hands here.
I can harvest, I can harvest some of that, and I...
And James, on the back of the sedimental line, is there any way, like, on the south end of town? Because I know we flushed through the hydrants, and yeah, there's that burst of discoloration. Have like a fast flood exit, but straight out of the gr, you know, straight out like, down by wellhouse number one. You just cut that off and just...
Okay, but to your sediment, actually? Your hydrant, it doesn't restrict. You can open that hydrant up to where it gets free flow, what you're talking about.
And it'll pick that sediment up?
Yeah.
Just sitting on the bottom of the pipes?
Yes, you can get enough water, fast enough, yes.
Okay.
Where Jack's talking about, our standpipe, we only have so much volume and so much pressure. So, we need to talk about looking up two bumper trucks to the hydrants, like, if there's a fire, in fifteen minutes, they can suck that tower down.
You're done.
And we're out of water, because our wells cannot keep up.
Yeah.
So, we don't have enough water volume to correctly flush our hydrants and system accurately, or often enough in the right way, to get all of that out. I've talked to a couple of different people from a couple of different agencies. The company that cleaned the tower, they offer a service that's called Ice Pig. Sounds funny, but a pig is something they put in the water line and force it through with pressure or whatever to clean out our water. Now, they have this procedure now. They use sodium chloride and something to freeze something, a real abrasive slurry. And then they'll, you isolate a section of pipe, and they'll pump it in one hydrant and blast out the other. And it's basically like a giant slushy. And that is, that's sort of like a solid object, a pig. The old pigs used to get caught. There's no way for this ice to get caught. If, if it does, it'll just melt, and then problem solved. And then push that through, clean out your whole line. It's very expensive. It's like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to get the show up with the trucks.
So, maybe someday a grant can be for something like that.
Is that anything we can do eventually?
Ourselves? No, I have, there's no, you don't have the equipment, or that's, no.
I mean, it's something years down the road, once we get...
Well, when we get to Haiti, that's something to talk more about the water lines.
Okay.
Oh, when are we gonna get Katie?
Oh, she wanted to come. Oh, wanna do that now? Really?
I'm here, I...
You want me to?
Yeah, I'll do Katie now.
I make a motion and go to executive session to let Katie discuss what she needs to discuss.
This kicked off, by the way.
Hold it up and turn around.
I know I forgot some of it. I'll mention one thing, if it weren't for the personal notes that I made and kept when a sewer was built. You didn't even have a sewer map, because it was all messed up and all thrown away.
Oh.
So, you had a group come in, and they were gonna clean house, and our up-to-date water maps, all the notifications on. Ah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of maps. I can't tell where all the water lines are, because they're all thrown away. There was updated maps here. And we get them up, and everyone, we figured all that little crazy way, we didn't need that. And things been going down. It's been waiting for a long time.
Wow.
I don't know. It's started.
Well, thanks for all your knowledge, Jack.
Well, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but...
Well, it's better than what you thought. Nothing, sort of nothing.
James, you got a big project in that other room. There's, it's sad part about it, when you have the problem with the sewer plant, it's tough to fix it, it was all in that other room.
Oh, down there? Yeah, there was parts laying over there in the shed, brand-new parts.
Yeah, parts around. And there were people that had found us in the house. Like, I had all the training on that one, it was new. And nobody bothered asking me, so I didn't go over there all the time. Had Matt Hires supposed to be taking care of it, somewhere along the line, something failed.
Yeah, but it runs like, turns like a kitten mouth still.
Oh, yeah.
When, well...
Oh, Lord. We had to wait?
Hang this up on the wall. Thank you, Mike.
I make a motion, and that wakes up Katie's proposal.
I second it. Just that anything Katie does is coming, Dr. Caroline.
Okay. All the business, equipment?
Um, it is, and it's ordered.
What color did you get? Did you get a color? Did you tell them what color?
I got blue and silver.
All right, it's orange.
What color do you want?
A bright color.
Fun color.
I was going with orange, the orange and yellow, but it doesn't matter. Yeah, so, too late, orange. I, because that's, we talked about it, and then I forgot to stop the next day and talk to her about it. I, she was, she didn't come down, and I was thinking, right.
The total price, that total was twelve thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, the discount seven hundred and fifty. Shipping, one thousand four hundred and ninety. Overweight is two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pounds. So, it's twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What was the name of that company?
P V... M V, M V B playgrounds. Somebody's got to do it, A A A, state.
M V B.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, it was the, it was discounted, it was like, yeah, half price. We got it. Sarah found it. And it's huge, but it has a big warranty. Like fifteen years, hundred years on the steel support.
So, is it steel frame? Or coated steel frame, or...
It's steel frame.
Yeah, it's big, heavy duty.
It weighs four thousand one hundred ninety-five pounds.
And we have a lot of load.
Yeah, we're very... What's his face have?
Prop Service and Chris Behrens both have skid loaders with forks, with...
Well, that's something for all ages.
Prop Service and Chris Behrens both have skid loaders with forks on them. And they get one of them that come up with a load of forks.
And then the other couple, three thousand dollars, because one that you screen out, the Kelly that told us that we have...
Probably still all that. Yeah.
Yeah, that was our, our twelve thousand, that's what we put in here. So, we thought it was a good deal.
Yeah.
And it's half price and it's big.
What colors did you want?
Bright, like orange and yellow or something, but...
You could pick and choose whatever, that would have just been fun to have.
Something bright to stand out, but it's, we're gonna put on this side of the park, so people drive by, they'll see it. But we're, I was gonna talk to, and get a sign. Marcy Metz makes signs in Lincoln, and have it, um, this playground equipment brought to us by whatever, you know, the city of Beverly, the grant that it was, and then also the community club, so people know who funded it.
And whoever, whoever else would donate to that.
Sure, yes. So, did, so you did order it already? You did already order it?
Yeah.
And it said, say, six to seven weeks to get here, one month? Did they give you a deadline to be here?
Nope.
Can we see if they can change the color? Like, maybe the order isn't processed?
I can probably doubt it, says color is confirmed.
It says what?
Color is confirmed.
Maybe I can call?
Oh, well...
You can try, I mean, but...
Yeah, just call them, ask them. If you can't, you can't, it's all right. Nothing we can do about it. We're not...
Voiceful, the city blue.
Yeah.
City blue.
It's probably like the picture I just showed, the blue, the blue and the silver. It's all right. But just not brighter would be more cheerful in the park. Hey, keep it going, I'll see if you can... I don't know, I mean, what you call it.
Any dangers?
Scratch your book.
I'm just just gonna show them, when I order... I'm just just gonna show them, when I ordered those other books for, uh.
Yeah, orders.
I found that book there. And it's ordinance is the stuff to, endanger structures and stuff that are injured. And they have ordinance in there and stuff.
Do we have any ordinances of our own for damage or danger?
Yes, we do. But they're, they really need that data.
Well, I mean.
Problem is we have to have somebody licensed to do it, actually condemn them.
Do we have to have somebody licensed to what?
To condemn them, I think.
No, you have to, you have to have, according to the ordinance that we have, that I read, you have to have a compliance officer.
Yeah.
And, and then it goes from there.
And I think that basically tells you, says almost the same thing.
Right, there's a, there's a list of criteria that, um, doesn't have to condemn it, but.
It just has to be unsafe.
Well, it's like a checklist, they can go through, oh, this is bad, this, 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 this. It leaves nothing up to interpretation or judgment, you know, it's, oh, vermin present, a little rough, broke, you know.
Yeah, cause rough, rough stuff is gonna eventually.
There's a whole list of stuff, um.
So compliance officer from one that we hired?
Yes, one that the council points, and you have, I can't.
Kind of like what we were gonna do with the Gotham dams, okay.
Right, I, I, I can't tell you exactly how the ordinance read, but.
If this inhabited by human beings cannot have this building or be in the building, it's dangerous to the.
Yeah, no, none of that, bros. Yeah.
Are you Williams in my brother? I have a, I have a. They were some suspected structures.
Right, and we have, and aren't we still, that's what that five.
But if there is a, a written complaint petition signed by four or five people, then the compliance officer is obligated to go and investigate. Or he can investigate, he, she can investigate on their own.
Now, you just have to be brought up in front of the city council?
Well, that's, that's the beginning, and then, then it starts a hearing procedure with the owner of the property. And it, it goes on down the line, and I can't remember exactly how it's worked at all, but, um, they either have to have a certain amount of, short amount of time to get it up to code or.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a problem with.
They have to pay for the dismantling and.
We, we have the ordinance, but we can't do anything until we have a, a city council meeting.
No.
So I think we.
No, we have.
We have, we have a problem because we don't have.
A code enforcer.
We, we don't, we don't have any way to enforce anything.
And that's what, and, but that's what part of the, the ordinances and the court with Jennifer and Judge Grace, that's what part of all that is gonna take care of, things just take time.
That's what I thought about when I saw that book, I thought, but this would be set up and ordinance that was properly ordered and, and stuff. If ours.
Yeah, and we can, maybe you can get ours out for the next time and we'll go over that and see what, you know, what we can do. Cause we're getting really close to being able to take care of some of these things, we just can't do it without.
Well, I've had, uh, two parents come to my home. And, uh, the ladies camper is part of, you may wait a week according to city ordinances. But, um, this elderly person has been giving the younger kids, uh, drugs.
Yeah, there is an ordinance on that.
I don't wanna get caught.
About living in the camper, it has to be.
Right there.
Oh.
But the thing is there, that it also says is they have to ask so many people with a hundred and fifty feet of ample they can park there.
I see everything is wrong, but.
Well, um. It's not even a mobile phone.
No.
No, we get, we had to make.
Right across, yeah.
Home base, move his, or put his trailer up, we had camper.
But, and they also made her hook his up to sewer.
Sewer.
Right, it's gonna be there long term, that ordinance states if it's, uh, construction workers or harvest belt, camper does not.
Right, that's not.
This ordinance doesn't cover that. This was brought to my attention a month ago, almost.
Yeah, it's been, well, she, she lived out July thirteen.
Right, well, I went down and looked and yes, there's a camper down there and it's obvious, it's, I mean, staying there.
Yep, lights are on, the door's open.
But that's where my jurisdiction really is, you know, what, who am I, what am I to tell what she's doing or?
That's where we send them a, a copy of the, a copy of the ordinance, isn't it? Or, I mean, I don't know how to go about it, other than.
Well, it's been there about a month now, so, so we, we have a timeline, it, oh, it's been a year or so.
I just, I mean, everybody knew what was going on, Main Street.
It's on McLean's property, cause they own that store, so it's not.
My, you know, and I, I won't, but that's.
She just can't, we can't have it towed off, she just can't live in it without it being hooked up to the sewer.
Well, I know one time, when I was in here, I asked her and she's, well, just a couple, three more days, we've got a place to rent, but nobody will rent for him because of what she does.
Mm-hmm, and then she, yeah, she's still living there. You can go down there now and look, and the light's on, she's still there.
What'd she do?
She sells drugs.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I can't say anything, I don't, I can't say anything, this is recorded, not un-triable.
No, but, you know, that's what we hear. But she's still, but she.
Out of the town.
Well, even though she sold cookies, she's in violation, so.
Yeah, violation of city ordinance and.
So you want me to send her a copy of your ordinance?
Yeah.
I, I was just asking because I've got parents, what, last Saturday, I had another parent come to, um.
Right.
Well, he took my kids over there and told me, yeah, I'm not, uh-uh.
They need to call the police, that's what they need to do.
Does the city count?
And.
Yes, do.
And the one mother is brought in a statement, but if the city's not gonna, you know.
We are, we are not, well, as far as we're living in that, that's what we can take care of, but as far as anything else, we cannot do, we're not the police, we can't do that.
Nothing we can.
No, I tell you, so I'm gonna call the police.
I, I don't have the exact date that I went down and looked, when the.
It was like you said, middle of July, end of July.
She had to be out by July.
But it was still a few days before she finally got out.
Right.
Fifteen, somewhere in there.
She took her like three days.
So, so basically by next month, she'll be in lockdown there.
Right.
Next week, I mean.
No, she already came by next week.
Next week, she'll be down her month.
Too long.
Send letter.
Or, you know, ask her whether.
The intentions are. Well, you know, she didn't bother to ask permission, they just moved the camper in and on the property and somebody's living there, you can't do that, there's city, just send her a copy of the city ordinance. You know, I don't think we have to ask her what her intentions are. You know, tell her she has so many days or whatever it says, you know, and she can bother coming out and get.
She has to have waters or a passion that's her.
And even, you know, the sheriff's department, what did they come to do?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We don't have, um, we don't have a court thing, but we, we will. I don't know what, her got his upped, so we never need to do that.
Yeah. Might just take, you know, it's not to me, tell her, you know, there's nothing left to be done.
They just, they can tell the cops, but his is going down there.
But they still won't.
Well, I know, but they.
Yeah, just tell them, you have to call the police, there's nothing that the city council can do.
Not our place, call them. It's their kids. It's just like me, I can't call.
He was answering fire hydrors that was getting shot over there, and I told him, don't answer. But we heard the other ones and he went in and got his, so.
I scare my dog.
Somebody goes, it's just like that, I can't call.
He doesn't need to.
I can call you, but, you know, I can't, I can't call cops either.
The explosions have been happening down on our street again.
Oh, yeah. Did you hear how many, did you hear how many, how many shots it took?
Before.
Yeah, I think that stroke, you know, really did. Yeah, he, he shot six times before he finally got it to make contact.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah, that big bone in my ear, I can't tell, that's very awesome.
Yeah, I don't think he'll, so, he might have had a hand, oh, that, shotgun shells. All right.
Traffic, standard tra- traffic ordinance, sure, we don't, we don't have to talk about that.
Now, I did have something on old news real quick. Um, what are we gonna do about that alley that's being blocked?
Which one?
The one off of the.
Billy, I, he got a letter too.
Okay, cause I noticed that, uh, West Star now has a contract company. Guy drives up and down those alleys and he points a gun at each one of our meters.
Yep.
There, he's gotta get out to read up to three different meters and walk through and.
I sent, I sent a letter to Billy, I sent one to Tyne, and I sent one to Richard Lee.
Do I get? For what?
I have this message.
Oh, when, the one with the thing in the alley, can't we just have that towed off? It's blocking an alley, it's city property, we can just have.
That's what I thought was agreed a couple meetings ago.
Well, I say. Paul Jared, have him come get it?
Now, I did have Chris move the truck park down there, it's setting over top, so it's blocked, so that has been moved. And I found some people, we're gonna get, pick a side of it, sundar, Sunday, and we're gonna go down and we're gonna put the roof on Jimmy Crowley's house.
That's nice.
Well, that tarp fell off and got bigger holes now, but now we're gonna do.
But who's gonna pay it, Kenny?
It's for free, Kenny's. Kenny already has all the shingles done, they're just, they're free.
Huh?
It's already, hell, it's a shingle.
He's, he's got the deck.
I know, but who's gonna pay him to pay, put the shingles on?
She said it's free, it's free.
Well, don't, don't matter to me.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, it's free gratis.
Budget?
No.
Budget?
Uh, the budget's done, it's been paid for today. Taxes are up a little bit. Um, I tried to get them exactly the same as last year's, but it was like eight, sixteen point two fifty-four and I got sixteen point two fifty-six. So it's probably like fifty cents or a little bit, not much. Uh, but they're in. The bills that we have to pay for next month, that's counting this swing set thing, is eighteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, but the swing set thing, we have, we already have grant money.
Yeah, we've got the money, but it's still gonna come out of, I mean, you, you've gotta include that.
The three thousand dollars that we're taking out, that we donated as our part of the swing set?
Right.
Yes.
But it's in the total of our account. I mean, it's not out of that, that twenty-two thousand something we have is, has, has the, what did we say, twelve thousand dollars in it.
It's not what?
Your total. Your total amount. Not the big one, okay. This balance of the bank, twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay, that includes the five thousand eight hundred dollars, the two thousand dollars from the.
So it includes the grant money?
Yes. That includes the grant money, the eight hundred dollars, the four thousand dollars that we're putting in with. Is that right?
No, how much is the total bill of the swing, including the shipping? Like twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, yeah, plus the fourteen thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-four.
That includes shipping?
Yes, that's it.
So we owe like twenty-nine hundred dollars, about three thousand dollars is our share. Because you said there was fifty-eight hundred dollars plus.
There's five thousand eight hundred that was the grant, there's the two thousand the community club gave us, there's a two thousand from our golf.
That's ninety-eight hundred dollars.
That's ninety-eight hundred, and then whatever else the city puts in.
The Carolyn Satan, that's all in this twenty-two thousand.
That's all in that twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Everything in that.
Why would you do that? I didn't know, did we know that?
I think I told you that the other day.
No, is it, has it been in the meeting, like, have you put it in here as income before, in any of the minutes?
Yeah, it's, it's an, and it's, it.
It had, it was at one time, you entered it?
Yeah. The June one, the camp grant, two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Park grant, five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Of June? I don't know, I'm not seeing that online, but. June, oh.
Well, there it is.
Right.
Yeah, and we also bought a mower too, that's why our.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
But you're also gonna have.
Income coming in?
Yeah, another nine thousand dollars coming in.
Okay.
That you have another water filter, another.
Well.
A lot of lines, we want to, they would have to pay this, that's another three thousand.
Is anybody else behind that has made an agreement to accompany payments that we don't know about?
Uh, that happened.
And what's her agreement?
She's paying her current bill plus whatever else she can pay on, or like, well, that's what she had that big water leak.
Aren't they supposed to come before the council and ask for approval?
I believe so.
I think Katie, that's on my watch.
Why do we give them permission if the council's not giving them permission, why is this happening?
I did good, get her in, pay anything.
Then shut her off. You know, while we gotta go from one, go to the other, you know, I understand, but we have to be consistent, if they're not gonna, they gotta come and ask permission some kind of way.
And if they don't have pulled their end, when they say, then the water, they should all.
We, if, if other people find out that they're not having to present their thing to the city and other people do, then we got that where people.
They'll just, they'll just come up and talk to you and think it's okay, and that can't happen, why do you have a council?
Shane pay his bill.
Ooh.
Shane.
Do what?
Shane pay his.
I gave her the bill, I gave Sarah the bill, the deal with Shane is Tina came and looked at the bill, and as far as they know, they couldn't figure it out. So the best result was to give him, because he got a letter saying he owed what, two hundred and thirty-three dollars on his door?
We.
Yeah?
And we knocked off all except for the.
Well.
We freeze the bill.
Yeah, everything was knocked off except for June's bill, again, but June bills start over. That's the best, even with Tina's recollection of looking at things, that's the best that. So Shane is good, he owes for June's bill, which we.
Now he owes for July.
Or whatever, whatever I gave him, whatever he gave me to give, I gave it to him. And gave it to Sarah, so. All they have is the one bill of whatever it is, seventy, eighty, sixty bucks.
All this for July?
Yes.
No, that one was for June.
That's the only bill it has then.
Well, he's got July to come out.
Well, we have that just came out, he has till the twenty-first to pay the one for June, and that's all I'm talking about, he ain't fucking done anything. So he, you know, yeah.
I will, I will get that.
Well, you know, that's the whole point, is some of these people, we've tried to get them to come to the council, and then you go ahead and give them permission, which you can't do.
We need agreement to be signed at counseling.
Yeah, get a whole, for each person.
Draw up some kind of agreement and then, and they can sign it and then they'll have it paid.
We have agreements.
Huh? Then why are we not using them?
Like I said, why is she trying to get money?
Well, you need to do it properly because they can be held liable.
Remember when Nation went around and shut everybody off, money just came out of the woodwork, that's how you get money out of the rock.
So, you know, that, the, as far as I know, that, you know, they are supposed to come before the city council and that's what you need to tell them, sorry. They can't keep changing the rules, cause water. Yep, they don't pay it on time, they don't ask for prior, but it shuts off. Yep, they don't pay it on time, they don't ask for prior approval, it shuts off.
Jim's next.
Well, you're down. You, your turn.
You're up.
Your turn.
Water tower cleaning went well, um, filling the towers did not. August third was my first full alarm shut off on the tapless. From the seventeenth of July to August third, I could not get the tower full because of water usage in town and the low volume pump.
So, we really don't have enough water for you?
All of the complaints about low pressure and everything, they never fell below twenty-two pounds, but twenty-two pounds is not a lot of water coming out of anybody's. So, it's, it's understandable, some people are gonna have low pressure.
Is it, is it pulled down?
Yes, well, it's back to operating level, you know, off of, kicking on the, um. There wasn't as much nasty in the power as I expected. So, I didn't know where all the nasty in the water was coming from. I took some samples, I talked to some people from Kansas River Water, I showed them samples, and the unanimous decision, that's iron and manganese that's built up in your lines. So, through the chlorination process, it attacks that, and our well, uh, which one? The water up there has, has some iron in it, has some manganese, and that also contributes to it, but over the course of fifty-some years, Jack was telling me, the original water lines came in fifty years ago or better, whatever, them iron lines, they're gonna have a lot of buildup in them, and it's gonna take a long time to get that out.
How long have them lined, uh, what's their, like, life expectancy of the line?
Well, um, once they get coated on the inside with stuff, they can last a long time. I mean, until they, it's the forces of freeze thaw, freeze thaw, that, that end up breaking them. I don't know what it was, they went in and put new plastic lines in, not everything. But that's something I was gonna, here in the future, try to maybe secure a grant, or see if there's any money out there to get our old iron lines, they're fifty years old replaced. I don't know if there is or not, I know we can't afford to do it, it's, it's an expensive thing.
But there's always some kind of grants up there for-
Right, and even a fifty-fifty grant where we match is still probably gonna be out of our-
Right, but maybe a couple, three grants, you know, now, it'll work out.
But I'm gonna look into that. I'm just gonna have to continue flushing there by Linda's house as needed. Where you gonna add? Right across from my driveway.
Oh, okay.
I got a question, somebody, you know, we use that new Aqua stuff instead of chlorine in our water? Somebody says they still get chlorine smelling their water, is that possible?
It's, it's-
It's just gonna be in the line?
It's a different kind of chlorine.
Oh, alright.
It's, it's, uh, I'm worried.
But it's not, okay.
It's in a different form with the-
They only get it like every Sunday, I don't like-
Well, what it is, when, when the level gets real low in the line, they get that smell.
How low are you?
When it's being used up. Um, and, and that's part of the problem, I'm using a lot of sanitizer up at the wellhouse, so that I can have legal residual limits throughout the system. The difference in, in putting in point two up there and, or two, two point oh up there and getting point four down here, there's a major demand in the system. The iron lines use, use up that chlorine. And anything else that's in there that needs to be sterilized, that's what, with chlorine demand, pulls that out. So, I have to put in high enough amount up at the wellhouse, so that we're in compliance at every single outlet.
So, if we're clean lines, that would eliminate all?
You could lower, probably lower the-
They wouldn't have to fight to clean it some other way?
Right. And you don't have to adjust the chlorine bill all the time, because if you get a couple real low readings, um, heat, you know, the water's sitting in the water tower for a week or two, and the temperature gets up, that dissipates the, the strange-
Chlorine, yeah.
And on the weekends, a lot of people are using more water, so, so water that's been sitting in a line, and, and that stuff's degrading in there, is getting moved and built, or being used up or moved around, and that's why, maybe why somebody's getting that smell. I'm doing everything I know how at this point, I'm trying to learn more and more, if I keep it circulated and-
I didn't, I didn't realize the part about that new stuff had chlorine in it or whatever, something like, I don't know why, because we're not using chlorine, so.
There's, there's a new, or not a new, we could get a new chemical we could add up at the wellhouse, and I don't know the cost, but it attaches to that iron and all that stuff, doesn't give away from it, it just keeps it from turning red. And it's, I mean, it's still in there, plus another chemical in our water, but you wouldn't have the red or black, but we would have it at the cost, and you're, like I said, you're still having another chemical in there.
They could just give, yeah.
Filters and new lines and flushing the lines are the only solution that I know of. I'm gonna be blading roads, I got the raider backup going.
Are you on, are you, have you been working on ditches?
I have not been digging any ditches. I honestly have been worried about how many hours I'm gonna put in, because one week was like forty-eight hours when we created the tower.
Well, uh-
I know how tight things are, and I'm not just gonna be out showing dirt and ditch.
Oh, no, I'm not actually work, I'm really never, we just asked.
Well, but I know there's a lot of stuff that doesn't look like anything's getting done, but I'm-
No, I'm, I'm asking, 'cause are I blading the roads to why? I'm asking, I don't know.
You what?
Cause they're all, they're all bulging.
Yeah, but they're not gonna get, but the ditches are not, it's just my opinion, I don't know anything, but you dig the ditches first, and the water flows down the ditches, it stays off the roof. I know you have to peak the road.
Right, well, there's humps on the side, there is, there is some, there's some ditches.
Sure.
And if that, the hump on the side, like down Christie and Railroad-
Yeah, that-
I bladed all-
Mm-hmm.
The, tried to cut that-
Right.
And got tremendous amount of grass, crap, but there's a lot of good gravel there, too, we had. So, I worked it across a few times, trying to get the gravel out of the grass, and let the grass set for a month now. So, I can blade that again and get more of the goodie back onto the road and less crap. And like I said, that's one of the plans I'm starting to blade more.
I, I just, I don't know, so I gotta ask.
I can say if you end up with a bunch of crap and you ain't got nothing to do with, like a driveway. With that lake I have in my backyard.
Okay.
But it can't be used somewhere else from the city, whatever.
The emergencies happen like the tarp, and it's different.
I just asked how many hours it's supposed to work.
How many hours are you working?
Twenty a week, if there is.
Well, I mean, no more than like thirty-six or forty in the summer. Are you working more than?
Nobody's ever, Gina was at thirty-two, is all I-
Okay, well, that's good, I mean, I don't, because in the summer, we have all these, everybody has all these demands they want you to do, but you can't get it done in twenty hours. So, but in the wintertime, definitely it's not.
Well, if, yeah. Alright, I will, uh, not worry about it. Also, another thing, we need to, council needs to be, think about, um, a water meter replacement program. Since I've lived in Beverly, or been on the council, or mayor, or anything, I've never heard or seen anything discussion about replacing any water meters. We do have a lifespan.
Aren't they, when we-
Two thousand and three, would be some of them replaced.
When we were, when we hit the water?
But that was just on the lines that they, uh, redid the water lines, and we did probably a third of the town.
Oh, God, mine was moved.
Well, if that moved, it'd be there, put a new meter in there.
Oh, okay, I don't know, I don't know.
The information that I've dug up, ten years, you should replace a water meter, because they lose their accuracy and, you know.
Sure. How much are they for a water?
I'm not sure, I'm thinking between two to three hundred dollars.
Oh. There is, um, uh, the Geo Hewitt Grant, did you see that come? For up to fifty thousand dollars for community improvement, I mean, yeah, we just have to apply support, and I think, you know, I don't know, but I would like to think that we have a shot at getting something, because we are making an attempt at helping ourselves with the community-wide cleanup, you know, we're, uh-
There was something key also.
We did something else, we did the park, we also contributed something there, we're trying to make some improvements, and maybe that, you know, maybe that's-
Even if we can't secure a grant, um, my recommendation is that we figure out a plan.
Maybe there's something bad-
If we have a hundred meters in the, in the system, um, we do ten a year. So, if it rotates, you know, set up some kind of a plan.
So, if someone needs one, you can just replace it, and then we, I mean-
Start with the oldest one.
Right.
Sure.
Now, can them, all of them be repurposed?
I don't know, they can be, I'm, I'm sure they can be rebuilt, but I don't know if it's cost effective.
Right.
I, I, I don't know, I get, I'd have to look into that, but-
That's something I would be applying to something.
Even if you wanted to do five a year.
That's something worth looking at.
You know, it's, it's, it's a start, it's something to, to get the ball rolling, and then by the end of the, you know, you're still, at twenty years, you know, every twenty years, you, all your meters are new. That's not recommended, but it's probably better than what we got right now.
Well, and eventually you'll start over, you know, the ones, the first one, it's just, but at least we have, are up to date all the time, we're trying to keep-
Find out who's got the stones in here in town.
Well, I would look, it, it's not necessarily all, oh, this one's ten years old. It's, it's a combination of ten years old plus a million and a half gallons or two hundred thousand gallons, you know, you'd have to look at the gallons.
How much, how much are they? Do you know?
I, I don't have an exact figure, but I'm thinking anywhere from two to four hundred and eighty.
Oh, so not too bad.
Yeah, 'cause all the, all the meters off the red dash line should be the ones that are placed in oh-three.
Yeah, the dark, the dark one, the old ones.
Still, that's thirteen years ago.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, find out how much they cost, or whatever, find out.
But that was one thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, I'm gonna need some more, another barrel of chemicals to-
Need another barrels?
Uh? Is there any other things that are pressing that council wants to see me?
No, as long as you make yourself dumb around town.
Well, I think we need to get that down here, crossing the bank where Jack's talking about the dirty road and over, get that finished, dig now.
My chief is down there with a shovel, whoever did it.
Yeah, he, 'cause he asked me before we, our, and he'd asked me if he could do that, work on that, clean that, I'm like, knock yourself out, dude, take it, whatever.
I started working on that with the backhoe, and he told me he had a skid loader and a truck, and he was taking care of it, so I stopped working.
Well, then I-
Well, we gotta, gotta hold him up to it or something, 'cause like Jack said, he calls, Jack will sue.
Just do it.
He was down there tonight, filling the truck.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I guess we'll, if he, we'll give him so long, and if he doesn't do it, then just go in and do it, I don't know. Scoop it up, company, his father.
How much would that grinch fencing or something like that cost to put around that hole?
About a dollar a foot.
Huh?
About a dollar a foot.
Um, if we, well, if he doesn't take care of that, how many letters have you sent him? At least a couple, three?
Three, four years, three, four years.
Since that's calling in?
Yeah.
Okay, then can we not send him a letter saying that he has so many days to comply, and if not, we will do it ourselves, take care of ourselves, and it will be built to him? Built to him, or attached to his taxes?
Yeah.
It's a safety issue, and we're gonna get to-
Problem is, we attach to taxes to that property, that's probably about ten dollars a, you know?
Oh, I'm just gonna say, I'm not sure what that's what the barrel of chemicals for, but Kathy brought me outside, and she asked me to bring up the back of the weeds growing in the asphalt.
Yeah, she has brought that up, about in the cracks in the road, in the middle of the road.
And the dips in the road.
And I said, we'll drive on it and burn it down, but she says it's breaking up the asphalt, and I keep going to this asphalt, it's little than all we are, so it's probably already breaking up before the weeds are growing, but-
It's just the rain that's coming out.
The rain, cool, alright, yeah. Um, but these right here, have you sprayed them?
In front of Richard Lee's?
Yeah.
On purpose.
In front of Richard's?
No, we left Richard's.
I think if he would try fishing or say that, but Timmy, you know, but you don't-
Yeah, he don't try anything, I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I-
Yeah, I-
What I did was I wrote him a letter, and the letter I said that he needed to come up here and get the weeds and stuff cleaned up around his buildings, and clean up the trash lifts around his building.
So-
If he does not do it, we will do it for him and charge him twenty-five dollars an hour.
Well, and here's the deal-
I moved between the buildings, and I mediated and cleaned up this street towards Churchill on the side of that building, so the sidewalk was at least accessible, but I didn't do it front.
But that's in between those two buildings, it's him, though.
I don't know.
Yes, yes.
Because there was a trailer parked in there last summer?
No, he owns the first building, and whoever owns the other two buildings also owns the lot.
Richard's all those.
But, no.
Crowder, he ended up building Crowder.
Not according to the Richard, the, or the-
He didn't have the money, pay, he gave it back to Richard.
No, I know that part, but I'm talking about the other ones, it's, uh, Bogard or-
It's actually name.
They're not, you go up there and talk to Ron, that's the prison's office, and they're not.
Also, I'm gonna go to Lowe's this week to get materials to fix the eaves on the building.
Oh.
This building here. Hopefully this week. I haven't ordered any of that cold mix.
Well, wait till Labor Day.
Have a special?
He, he can get ten percent and twenty percent, he can get thirty percent off.
Hey, Labor Day weekend?
Labor Day.
Alright, then.
So, I'll get, get over him and, and tell him, tell him, in there, you call him or something.
How much is all the pallet?
I didn't ask you that much.
I was gonna tell you, James, if you're gonna go spend money, you need to let me know, so I can put money on the debit card.
Good.
But I don't keep a whole lot on.
Budget meeting, what's the budget meeting here?
That all you got, water towers?
Oh, sure.
This is, this is basically all I have.
That's all you got, maintenance, I mean? Okay, budget meeting August twentieth, seven o'clock here.
You need to decide on, on your next meeting.
Huh?
I said you need to decide on your September meeting, the third is Labor Day. You can have it the Tuesday after Labor Day, or we can have it the next fall, Monday on the tenth.
Probably on the tenth, and Charity can't be here on the fourth, so.
All right, ten sounds good.
Huh?
Yeah.
Ten sounds good.
Ten.
Anything else?
Uh, Chris Barron's asked me if, uh, you guys are still wanting him to haul the sand back, or whatever. He told you he'd haul it back if you guys bought it.
Or we'll haul it here?
Huh?
Yeah, from Lincoln to here, as long as he's got a truck coming back in.
Right. We've got that, I don't think we've got that.
And where it would be put.
Hey, oh, yeah, I got a question also.
This lot has, Steve Ryan got the papers on this lot over here for the-
One on this side of our building, he buy that?
Yes.
Why?
I don't know.
And what's he planning to do with that?
He hasn't though.
For a process of please?
No, no, right here, on this side of our city building, he bought that lot. And I would, 'cause what I was gonna do is suggest that we either buy that lot, or have the guy just turn it over to the city, whatever, he doesn't, he doesn't mow it, he doesn't anything, so now what's his agenda with it?
I, I have no idea, that's why I asked him, but yes, he has bought it, it was in the paper.
I haven't seen it in the paper.
Somebody saw it in the paper, but they were asking, Jack Miley, 'cause he was asking me the lot numbers. Somebody saw it in the paper, but they were asking, Jack Miley, because he was asking me the lot numbers.
Well, then I'm gonna ask how much you paid for it, because I, I just, I don't wanna know, because I imagine he's gonna wanna sell it, but why, we need to...
We need to make sure we get all our stuff off there that we want.
Yeah, all that, well, we only got a pile of gravel or a pile of dirt on it.
He said he didn't care that our stuff was on there. I don't know what he's gonna do with it.
Yeah.
He doesn't know what he's gonna do with it. What's he gonna do with the other one?
Well, he didn't tear the other building down, but the bank was gonna buy that bill, that building, they've been trying for years supposedly to buy that building, tear it down, and then they were gonna build them a building over there. I don't know what's going on, okay, I just wonder.
I just know when they come to the state and tear that building down, if that well, well, that's in there is not covered, it has to be filled.
In that building on that end?
Yeah.
And that...
That's on him, that's on him.
See, that'll have to be inspected for asbestos, too, before he can do anything.
He tore it all out already, he's already gutted it.
Eee.
Yeah, him and the boy, and, I don't know, I think the daughter, Laura was down there, but they already did it one day I was coming by, and she talked about them already taken out. Somebody looked inside, said it was...
See if he wants to help.
Just laying on this side, yeah, because, yeah, ask him if he wants to sell it, and then we'll find out how much paid for it first.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, you know, we might as well, we should have had first choice, had if they wanted to sell it.
Well, it probably just, you probably gotta hold it whoever owned it, I can't even remember the guy's name, he didn't own here.
But does it, is it all the way back to the alley?
Yeah, just to the alley, just to the alley, yeah, that, just that, this side of the building back. I don't know where twenty-five feet is, and...
Okay. Got it?
Make the most of it.
Everybody else got anything?
I'm making a note, I'm a German.
Second.
All favor, she say have something?
Yeah. Who?
Maggie.
Oh.
I started to say something.
I can bring it up next meeting.
Okay.